Okay, before we start, the City Council just met on three closed session items, and there is nothing to report out at this time. Good evening, and thank you for viewing the April 17th meeting of the Arcata City Council. The City Council meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting with both in-person attendance and teleconference access via Zoom. I'll start with the land acknowledgement. The City of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat people. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as gudini, meaning "over in the woods or among the redwoods." Past actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The City of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in the dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. And if you would like to, please join me for the flag salute. Will the city clerk please call roll?
Mayor Matthews.
Here.
Vice Mayor Stillman. Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Here.
All present.
If you wish to make a comment during the meeting, either at the two open public comment periods or for an individual agenda item, there are three ways to do so. If you are here in person, please line up behind the podium when the item you would like to speak on is accepting public comment. If you are logged into Zoom, click Raise Your Hand when it is time for public comment on the item you wish to speak on. If you're on the phone, press *9 on your phone to raise your hand. When it is your turn, you will be prompted to dial *6 on your phone. For each item, we will be taking in-person public comment first and then move to online comments. We will not be going back and forth, so if you are wanting to comment, please line up at the podium or raise your electronic hand as soon as public comment is requested for that item. We'll now go to ceremonial matters. Our first is the certificate of appreciation for Judith Mayer for her 17 years of service on the Arcata Planning Commission, and this certificate will be read by Councilmember White.
Whereas Judith Mayer was first appointed to the Planning Commission on February 21st, 2007, and whereas Judith has a comprehensive background in land use planning, including a doctorate in city and regional planning, a career teaching planning and environmental law, and a grounding in environmental stewardship and protection, and whereas Judith is a systems thinker who understands the relationships between and among decisions, plans, precedents, and intricately, and is able to weave together the big picture in her thinking and deliberations, pushing her fellow commissioners, staff, applicants, and the community to contemplate the broader implications. And whereas Judith Mayer's years on the Planning Commission spanned a period of new challenges, new state laws, climate change, housing insecurity, and affordability forced our city to rethink planning future. Judith was always on top of these evolving challenges. She has a deep understanding of civic planning that often guided the discourse of our meetings. Judith not only questioned the agenda items in detail, but often process and protocol as well. Always prepared, always thorough, rarely brief, and truly dedicated, and whereas it is clear from both the length of her service and the energy that she has put to her work on the Planning Commission that Judith cares deeply about Arcata and the impact of planning decisions on the community. And whereas the council, her fellow commissioners, and staff appreciate her contributions and service over the last 17 years. Now, therefore, the City Council of City of Arcata hereby expresses its appreciation to Judith Mayer for serving the people of Arcata for 17 years. We wish her all the best and commemorate her release from duty as of March 31st, 2024, dated April 17th, 2024, by Meredith Mayer as our mayor.
Oh my goodness. Thank you to the council. Thank you, everyone. I'd like to thank my fellow planning commissioners over all those years, present and in the past, and the city staff, the city council, and especially all the Arcatans who've come to tell the Planning Commission your thoughts and your concerns. It's been an honor to serve on the Planning Commission, and I wish you all well with all of the undertakings the city's in the midst of and going forward. Thank you, Arcata.
Thank you so much, Judith. Our next proclamation is in recognition of World Tai Chi Day, April 27th, 2024, and this proclamation will be read by Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Whereas World Tai Chi Day is now celebrated in hundreds of cities in over 80 nations annually, and whereas Tai Chi has been called medication in motion by Harvard Health publication for the myriad of health benefits it offers, and whereas numerous studies have pointed to the benefits of Tai Chi for stress relief, improved balance and coordination among the elderly, as well as improved behavior for adolescents with attention deficit hyperactivity disorder, and whereas World Tai Chi Day is meant to bring the community together to learn more about this gentle exercise, a series of mindful, relaxed movements that people of all ages and fitness levels can practice to improve health by boosting the immune system, increasing vitality, longevity, and well-being. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata hereby recognizes World Tai Chi Day in the City of Arcata, Arcata Plaza, at 10:00 a.m. on Saturday, April 27th, 2024, and encourages all residents to attend and to visit worldtaichiday.org to learn more. It's dated today, April 17th, signed by our mayor, Meredith Matthews, and we have Ms. Glenda Heseltine here to receive this.
Thank you.
This is a time of division, I think, for a lot of people in the world and divisiveness. And so to know that this is probably the only event that I know of, anyway, that's global, meaning on that day, all across the entire planet, everybody that wants to can participate, not just spectate. It isn't a spectator, it's, you know, participation, and I can't think of anything else. Maybe you all know of another event like that, but for me, it's kind of singular that way, that it's so dedicated to connecting us globally. And so that's maybe the most important thing about it. And then individually, we get to take a little more responsibility for our own health, and I think our doctors locally appreciate that. I appreciate this so much. You don't know. Thank you so much for honoring Tai Chi this way. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next proclamation is in recognition of Bike Month, which is May 2024, and this proclamation will be read by Councilmember Schaefer.
In recognition of Bike Month, May 2024, whereas millions of people bicycle to work, school, social gatherings, and to do errands, and millions of more people would bicycle for transportation if bike-friendly infrastructure and policies were more widely adopted, and whereas people bicycle for a variety of reasons, including because bicycling is affordable, convenient, fun, environmentally sound, and an excellent form of exercise and family recreation, and whereas bicycling addresses the global problems of climate change, car dependence, and air and noise pollution, it reduces traffic, parking congestion, and noise, and increases physical activity and public health, and whereas the City of Arcata promotes programs that encourage bicycling and that educate cyclists and motorists on how to share the road so all users feel safe. These initiatives earned Arcata a Bicycle Friendly Community Silver Award from the League of American Bicyclists, and the city continues efforts to reach the gold-level bicycle-friendly city in the near future. And whereas the City of Arcata has prioritized the development of a safe, connected, active transportation network through projects such as the Humboldt Bay Trail, Arcata Annie and Mary Trail, and the Bike Share Program, and whereas the city's goal is to advance bicycle-friendly routes throughout town, and therefore the city invests in bicycle infrastructure and implements its adopted complete streets policy. And whereas in observance of National Bike Month and Bike Month Humboldt, the City and Humboldt Bike Month Coalition, bikemonthhumboldt.org, encourages residents and visitors to participate in various Bike Month activities in May to share community support for bicycling. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Arcata that May 2024 is Bike Month throughout Arcata. The council encourages everyone to participate in Bike Month activities, encourages the installation of bicycle parking and other facilities to support Arcata's growing number of bicyclists, and encourages people to bicycle as a means of transportation this and every month, dated April 17th, 2024, and signed by our mayor, Meredith Matthews. And Colin Fisk is here on behalf of the Humboldt Bike Month Coalition.
Thank you. I just want to briefly let everyone know that there are a lot of ways you can participate in Bike Month. There are a bunch of group rides that are organized. There's the Bike Celebration down in Eureka on the 18th of May. There's the Love to Ride Challenge, where you can kind of register and challenge yourself and encourage other folks to get out there and ride as much as possible. You can find out all the ways to participate at bikemonthhumboldt.org. I also want to just briefly say that we have, as you all know, a really dedicated group of bicyclists or community of bicyclists here in Arcata and throughout Humboldt, and a lot of those folks are behind promoting and encouraging folks during Bike Month Humboldt. But I think it's important to acknowledge that biking is not just for people who identify as bicyclists, you know? Biking is for everybody. And for folks who don't know, there are a variety of adaptive bicycles and tricycles and e-bikes and things that folks with various physical limitations can use. People that don't have a bike, we have the local Bike Share Program that people can do, and it's pretty affordable. And, you know, as someone who didn't learn to ride a bike till I was 25, you know, it's never too late. People can get on a bike, figure it out. So just want to encourage everybody to participate, and thank you for the acknowledgement.
And our last proclamation for this evening is recognizing May 2024 as National Historic Preservation Month, and this proclamation will be read by Councilmember Stillman.
Thank you. The National Historic Preservation Month. Whereas National Historic Preservation Month is sponsored by the National Trust to celebrate historic preservation throughout our nation, and is celebrated by the city's Historic Landmarks Committee and the Historical Site Society of Arcata. And whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for revitalizing neighborhoods, buildings, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas the Historic Landmarks Committee will celebrate Preservation Month by focusing on building educational connections between the city, Arcata High School, Cal Poly Humboldt, Historical Site Society of Arcata, featuring places on the Arcata Plaza. And whereas the Historical Site Society of Arcata preserves the Phillips House Museum, maintains a website featuring walking tours, preservation articles, and archives, which is used by local schools to discuss the evolution of a community. And whereas the City of Arcata's Historic Landmarks Committee continues to work on fostering education, incentivizing strategies, including the Mills Act, to help property owners rehabilitate and maintain their historic properties. Now, therefore, it be proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata hereby recognizes May 24th as National Historic Preservation Month, and calls upon the people of Arcata to recognize and observe National Historic Preservation Month by walking the Arcata Plaza, Arcata's historic neighborhoods, and accessing historic information by visiting arcathistory.org, following at Phillips House, well, dash, Housing Museum on Instagram, and the Historical Site Society of Arcata's Facebook page, containing then-and-now photographs and articles in the Mad River Union. Tours of the Phillips House Museum can be taken in person or by visiting the QR code in the hallway by libation and shipwreck or the Phillips House Museum sign. It's dated April 17th, 2024. It's signed by Mayor Matthews, and Jeanette Cooper is here to receive it.
I am Jeanette Cooper, and I just would like to say one or two things, and that is that our city is very, very, very fortunate to have so many historic structures, both residential and commercial. These buildings add a certain character of days gone by to our city, as well as they tell a story of its growth over the years. Well, there's a significant concentration of these buildings downtown. They're present much further afield, to the east, to the west, to the north, to the south of the town center. They don't all date from the turn of the century, like some of the ones that really capture our attention, those big, you know, Queen Anne's, because buildings become historic after they've existed for 50 years, and then we start to think of them as part of our past and part of our story. So this means that we have several architectural periods present here in Arcata. As a member of the City of Arcata's Historic Landmark Committee and a board member of the Historical Site Society of Arcata, it's my honor and pleasure to receive this proclamation. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to early oral communication. The city values your comments. This 15-minute time period allows people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. Please note that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items that are not listed on the posted agenda. At the end of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. Supported requests that require council action will be set for a future agenda item or referred to staff. Speakers are limited to two minutes. There will also be time for the public to comment specifically on each agenda item, and again at the end of the meeting under item number 12. Please make your way to the podium, raise your hand if you're on Zoom, or press *9 if you're calling by phone to wish to make a comment.
My name is Joanne McGary, and first and foremost, I wanted the cameras to see this sign I brought in honor of that wise elder Judith Mayer, who just was recognized for her 17 years of service. I think I want to remind you that last meeting I talked about the indigenous people who value their elders, and I think that is one of the traits of a lot of people and communities that we can remember here in the City of Arcata. As we historically preserve buildings and edifices, we can also appreciate the history of people and their involvement and contributions to our city. And Judith Mayer is certainly one of those. Secondly, I did send an email to you about my deep concern. The state came out with a report that there hadn't been much accountability in terms of the money the state has given to programs throughout the state on homelessness, and I really do think that it might be time for us to have the people who benefit by the funding and create the programs in our community to give us a report, so that we, as the City of Arcata, can talk about the effectiveness of the programs that happen in our community to help the unhoused and the vulnerable. So I would like a citizens oversight committee to be considered. Finally, I bring the earth flag because it's Earth Day coming up, and it's a very important day for me, always, every year, and I really believe that this is a symbol of what we should be looking toward to the future, and the earth flag up there on the dais can maybe come down here to the citizens' podium during these meetings so that it can be viewed and seen, because the citizens like the earth flag.
Thank you.
Good evening, Gregory Daggett. I wanted to start out, it was two weeks ago tonight that at the end of the meeting, I wanted to give credit to Meredith for bringing up the noise element. That was the first time anybody's really even talked about it. That was the first time anybody's really even talked about it, so thank you for doing that. But unfortunately, it didn't have any bearing at all, because we had the police chief in front of us. So it was very disappointing from the standpoint of his answers, that he, when you asked him about noise, he was saying, you're talking about the parties that we have here in Arcata? So a little confusing, because I had a conversation with him, so he was well informed of what exactly was going on. So it didn't seem like he really wanted to answer the question. He also said, well, what are you talking about, the ordinance here in Arcata? I mean, this is a state law, and he is the chief of police, so it's something that is in our, actually on our website, saying that we need to be enforcing the laws of the state of California. So, you know, I'll give you an example of what should have happened like six years ago, when we had Brown and Newson, that's our governor now, when this exhaust noise ordinance went into effect. Unfortunately, our city didn't do what they should have done. If I was chief, I would have had first electronic sign warning people that this was not allowed anymore, and then after that, we would have liked, given them the fix-it ticket, which was available. At that time, it wasn't too much of a problem, but then what's happened over the years is that these car enthusiasts have become very emboldened on what they can do, and this was very, you know, they were online even talking about this, from the standpoint, they want to outdo each other's further standpoint of how loud they can get. So now it's totally out of control. I'd say probably about 20 to 30% of the vehicles that are coming into town are, they're violating the law, and it's been a systematic problem for two years, and it's never been addressed.
Thank you.
Yes. Good evening, council members. I'm Fred Wise. Twenty months ago, a member of the Board of Directors of Arcata Fire District came before the planning commission, and among what he said, "It seems incomprehensible to me that a recommendation on building height could come out of the planning commission or the city council until we have a full economic analysis of what it's going to cost the city of Arcata's citizens and the fire district to actually provide the protection there." You are now on receipt of a letter from the Arcata Fire District Board of Directors. This letter can be viewed on ArcataOne.com. And this letter sums up, says, "Until funding is established and district expansion is underway, we believe it would be imprudent to approve building permits and begin occupancy in the envisioned residential buildings." He's talking about buildings that are above three stories. We know that there's an effort underway to analyze the situation. We expect a report on that later in the year, before the end of the year. But what the Arcata Fire District is saying is that until they have the funding in place, it would be imprudent to have occupancy of tall buildings. I've written about this, I've spoken about this. I have no doubt that it's all going to get worked out, or at least I'm optimistic that it's all going to get worked out, but it's going to take about four years. What's going to happen in the meantime will be up to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mark Dubrow. Thanks, Karen, for responding to all my questions last time I was here. I've been gone for a couple of months, so my response to your response is a little late, but anyway, thanks for the information. So we were talking about the idea of smart growth and smart growth technology. They're two very different things, you know, we can have smart growth without any technology. We just need, you know, savvy urban planners and a willing public. Anyway, in that interchange, we got on the topic, or somehow it was mentioned, 15-minute city and smart city, just sort of thrown out there, like some of the elements of smart cities, we kind of have, you know, the police have the license plate cameras, which collect all kinds of data, and then they keep it for three years, if I understand your letter correctly. And we've got smart P G N meters, which track our energy usage, and then the city wants to get smart water meters. I understand, you know, all that, but if the city, if City Hall, I guess I should say, wants to transition Arcata into a 15-minute city or a smart city, we should all weigh in on that and collaboratively come up with, you know, a sensible plan, rather than having a top-down command and control approach, which is the perception of me and other people around town. Okay. Does Arcata have a digital code of ethics? I could not find that. Other cities do. City of Los Angeles just got sued because they're collecting all this kind of data with the meters and the police cameras and everything, and the people who, the city council didn't even know what kind of surveillance was happening. And so it came out that they did have this digital code of ethics, but they weren't following it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on Zoom?
Just going to double-check, Lisa. I know you raised your hand when we were doing recognition. If you wanted to say anything, this would be the time, but it looks like your hand is down, so just double-checking. Yep, okay. Nope, up and down.
Okay, let's move on to the consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, the item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. A is bi-weekly report on dispersments. B, award contract in the amount of $77,114 to Pace Engineering for the design and project management services for the Alliance Intertie Electrical System Replacement Project. Authorize city manager to increase the contract amount by up to $3,855.70, 5%, for a total amount not to exceed $80,969.70, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. Would any city council member like to pull an item from the consent calendar?
I need to pull item bi-weekly reports on dispersments.
Does any member of the public want to pull anything? I'm sorry. Do you know what, you want to?
Yeah, I was just wondering if I could ask about something that's not on the calendar, our minutes from the last meeting?
They will both be coming at your next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Any members of the public wish to pull from the consent calendar? No. All right.
Then I would move for approval of, on the consent calendar, number B.
Doesn't she just need to recuse? Can we do the whole calendar? Is that, yeah?
Okay, you can do the whole thing.
So I'll just, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I will second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I would just note, councilmember Vice Mayor Stillman's abstention on A.
All right, let's move on to old business. And A is to receive an update on the current status of registrations and inspections for the city's Residential Rental Inspection Program, R R I P. And can we get a staff report, please?
Hi.
Hi.
Welcome back to the council. It's my second time in front of you all, so please bear with me. Staff report being me saying hello and telling you what I'm here to present. So obviously, we are not quite a year into it, and when this program was adopted by council, there was a request for a annual update, and we're not quite at a year, but this is kind of a pivotal point, so we wanted to give the opportunity to give you an update, let you know a few things, give you the opportunity to ask me a couple of questions in advance of kind of the last stage of this year. So, you know, the whole point of the rental inspection program is maintaining housing stock, and really, the fundamental core value of this is life safety. And the whole reason this ever came about was years ago, a completely different council was a little tired of hearing about all the complaints about how much problems we have with housing here, so here we are in a rental inspection program, and essentially, where'd my little graph go? There we go. So we have approximately 1,300 registered parcels. Of those, there are 311 that are considered exempt. Some of those need to be verified. There's been about just under 100 inspections, and of those, two have resulted in code enforcement. So that's kind of just a little snapshot of what we have. And then we started with the mailers. We went out approximately 1,600 in the first batch. We got 550 responses, so the second batch, we're, you know, obviously excluding those, we got responses. Third batch of letters goes out, total responses. Now we're down to roughly 200. We need to, we're going to comb through that list very carefully and make sure anybody that has appropriately handled their business is not going to get the final notice of violation is really what's next. So really, one of the main things we wanted to present, so you have the opportunity to discuss it, possibly ask me questions, and take action if necessary, is just talking about really the fundamental core issue that has, seems to be coming up quite a bit when we get phone calls and people, I'm sure, have expressed their concerns to you. So I think everybody understands what owner occupied is. I don't think there's any question. If you own the house and you live in the house, that's clear. What is less clear is when you are the owner of a house and you do not live in the house. And in the eyes of the law, anybody that lives in a house that is not the owner deserves the same rights and protections regardless of their status. It doesn't matter if it's your nephew, your cousin, some guy off the street, or somebody who pays rent. They deserve the same fundamental rights and protections, because they don't have the same legal protection that an owner would have. So fundamentally, the thing that has really been a sticking point for a lot of people is this idea of, well, I don't charge somebody rent. Why should I be in the rental inspection program? And that's, that's an issue, and that's one of those hindsight's 2020 kind of things, right? Was that was not really addressed properly in the ordinance, and how would we have known until we get all the angry phone calls? So these are here just to kind of present you a couple of the different government code definitions and health and safety code issues, and I'm not going to read these out there. There, if anybody wants this later, it'll be accessible, but really kind of the bottom one is the one I'd bring your attention to, Civil Code definitions. These, I didn't cite the exact Civil Code, because it shows up in multiple Civil Code definitions. Landlord is the owner of a rental property, pretty clear. Tenant means tenant, subtenant, leasing, or subleasing, and it doesn't really matter if they pay rent or what that rent is, they're a tenant. Lawful occupation of residential real property, including lease or sublease. And you look up the legal definitions of lease or sublease, and it can be verbal, it doesn't have to be written, it doesn't have to include a monetary value. So if essentially, you own a house, and you say to your brother-in-law, your cousin, your nephew, or some guy off the street, yeah, go ahead, stay in my house, they're a tenant. And you, all the other unkind of foreseen legal stuff that can come out of, well, you let somebody stay in your house, and guess what? They don't want to leave. Well, you're going to have to go through the same eviction process you would for any legal tenant, regardless of how they got into that house. So this idea that somebody owns a house and they have their family member in there, so therefore their family member doesn't deserve the same rights and protections under the law as anybody else, it's a little hard to swallow, but that's not my decision, right? I'm just enforcing it as I interpret it. So that, I would say, is probably the biggest issue that you probably have heard about as well. So let me see. Basically, the next step, notices of violations. Yes, that is where we're at. Because we're, we're well past, you know, registration, there are properties that know they should have registered, and we know they should have registered and they haven't, and that's the next step. And a notice of violation is a 30-day notice, and the next step after that 30 days is fines, administrative citations. So that's where we're at, and that's why we figured it'd be good to come and say hello. So I think I'll stop there. I have a couple other things in case, but I figured I'd wait and see what the response is to that.
Can I, I have a question. I think you really, I mean, I know that you're really wanting some feedback on the particular, the situation about people, like family members and such, living there, and not, not being collected, and this is a rental inspection program, so I, I get that. Could you give us maybe a couple examples of things, you know, that you're looking at, scenarios that have come up that give you pause?
Absolutely, thank you. So there's probably about a dozen or so situations that are, I'll use a scenario. It's not, it's kind of an amalgam of a couple scenarios, but person owns a house and has a, a family member living in the house who has special needs, is not able to handle legal aspects of owning property, so therefore it's not appropriate for them to be the property owner. So therefore, somebody else in the family who is care, taking care of them is the legal property owner, and they're taking responsibility for that. So one thing that we had thought about is, well, maybe we need an affidavit. You know, if somebody is taking that responsibility but does not live in the house, maybe we need a legal document that they sign, so that we have on record that they are maintaining the smoke alarms, and if something happens, they're going to take care of the house. Other examples are kind of on the opposite end. I mean, to me, that seems pretty clear, that that deserves some second look. So we've got, like I said, about a dozen or so of those. On the other end of it, there are properties where the person who lives in the house is not a responsible person by choice, and the actual owners of record are scared of them and don't want to have anything to do with the place. And those are problem properties that we've had multiple code enforcement cases on. So that's the full spectrum of what we might be looking at.
I'll just complicate it by giving you one in the middle.
There you go.
One, and Mayor Matthews, actually, Matt, with this family and myself, they received a house here in Arcata as part of somebody else's estate, and it went to, you know, parents A and B. They have gifted that house to their son in their trust, but they have been told, both by their tax accountant and their estate planner, that they should not transfer that house to their son now, because there would be significant tax implications. That was the story five years ago. When they got their notice on the rental inspection program, they went to look at it again to see, well, if this is going to ultimately, because our son is not on the title of the house, that's going to kick us into this program, is there an easy way for us to get our son's name on the house? And then they were cautioned that, don't touch the title of your house, because you're going to lose your insurance, and in this fire kind of insurance condition right now, you can't afford to do that. So, I mean, there are some, you know, kind of mixed stories around there. Now, truthfully, we kind of drive by, and we also recognize that there's probably some basic health and safety that might need to be improved in that area, and their son may be working on that. It's not that they're necessarily living in a hugely unsafe condition, but if it was a tenant who was paying rent, we would probably be requiring them to fix those things. So, I mean, there are some gray zones, too.
Yep.
I wasn't on council when the rental, residential rental inspection program was instituted, and I was just curious, how are the short-term rentals held accountable to standards then? Because they're not included in the five.
So short-term vacation rentals? Yes, those are under a different program through community development. So they register, and there is a separate, whole separate program for that. And if issues are reported, complaints are reported, then we would respond to those complaints similar to any other questions or code enforcements.
So it's complaint-driven?
It is complaint. They do not have an initial inspection of the site. Which was actually a specific choice that the council made at that time. There was an option before that council to actually require an inspection. It would have also required the cost of that to be paid by the short-stay rental owner, and then at the time, they were really looking for ways, I think, to minimize the cost of the program itself, and so that was an area that was excluded.
Thank you.
I think when Joe runs out of rentals to inspect, maybe we could take another look at that, too. But it sounds like you probably got your hands full right now getting through the, the initial stock.
That's absolutely something that we can revisit anytime. There's also the multifamily buildings, so that's another subject that can be revisited. More than happy to expand this program as the council sees fit.
Yeah, and that's actually a question then that I do have. I'm glad that you brought that up, because I know we talked about, like, working with the fire department to kind of start to maybe see if we are able to take those over and how that would look, has there been any further movement on that, or is it a little too early?
My understanding is there are state laws that require the state fire My understanding is there are state laws that require the state fire marshal chain of command to go to a fire department. We're not going to be able to do those services for the fire department. There's, there are certainly possibilities of joint action, and they are certainly not afraid to let us know when there's issues we need to look at. But right now, unless California state laws change, no, we're not going to be able to take over for that.
You know, part of it, if you have three or more units, then the fire department has to check that. And I can say that from my own experience, and that they do it on an annual basis, and you're charged an annual fee for their coming in and checking to make sure you're, everything is in compliance with fire regulations. So the other thing is that I've had people tell me is that they, because you mentioned the person afraid of their tenant, that's one of the reasons there's so many people that really are interested in having vacation rentals, because they don't have to get into that. And they only have somebody there for so many days and so forth. But once you have someone in your unit over a certain amount of time, things aren't working out, then it's very difficult to remove a tenant from property. It's extremely difficult. And unless you're a landlord, or you know landlords that are dealing with that or have dealt with that, it's hard to understand how the law is in place for the landlord. Not for the landlord, for the tenant. Tenant laws are extremely strong, and landlord laws are not anywhere near the strength that they are. I just wanted to bring that up.
Well, I guess I was wondering, there's not a whole bunch of opinions flying out of, off the dais here on the question that you're asking us. And so because you are the person with boots on the ground doing this, I, I could tell by your tone, you maybe have some opinions. So I just thought maybe you could kind of tell us what, some things that you might think would be good, and then we could bounce some ideas back and forth?
Can I, I just, I'd like maybe more.
Absolutely, thank you.
I mean, I feel like out of all of these, if you say there's only like 12 that are exceptions, you think that that's something that you would take as a case-by-case basis? I think that, you know, we put this, and it went through a lot of iterations. We talked about it for, it came back and back and back. And the end of the day, the goal was to, you know, protect tenants. And so I just want to make sure that at the end of the day, even if it's, you know, in some of special circumstances that we're protecting those tenants. So I guess I'll echo what Councilwoman Racozales said and asked if you have some thoughts.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you both. That's, that's great, and I'm ready for that. So there are, like I said, about a dozen that I would say are pretty clear-cut eligible for exceptions. However, if we open the door for that dozen or so, there are probably about 20, maybe even up to 50, that in my opinion probably do not deserve that same level of exemption, who would question why these doesn't get it and they don't. So yes, it is a question of case-by-case basis. And in order to start making those exemptions for the dozen clear-cut cases, we need to have a clear outline of what we're doing, what we're allowing, so that the other 20 to 50 don't end up right back here asking the same questions again in a different way. So I do have a couple of suggestions. One, I kind of hinted at already, is affidavit exemption with the help of our legal team drafting a document that we would enable any owner who believes they qualify, they should be exempt from this program, for them to put their reasons on paper and sign to, I will check smoke alarms once a year, I will respond to any and all concerns and complaints, I will fix the water heater if it fails, whatever, whatever, however, we need to draft it, so that there's a legal document they've signed to take responsibility for that property. Like I said, when they're not, when the owner is not in the property, it's a lot harder for them to necessarily be held accountable. Another option we've talked about as possibility, you know, one of the main issues that keeps coming up is this idea of like, well, I'm not collecting any rent, so why should I be paying any fees? Well, we said, okay, you know what? We'd be more than happy to register you and give you a fee exemption, get you in the program, do your inspection, and waive the fee. We already made this program extremely cheap. This is not about making money. I don't think anybody has a leg to stand on if they say this is a money grab. So sure, we'll, we'll waive the fees on cases that make sense. And that would, that's another option. We could use both options. And as far as opinion, it's, it's not so much that I have a personal opinion, it's that I have a professional opinion. And that's, and what, that's what I've been asked to make, is a professional determination of the status. And because there's such a wide range of cases, you know, I have to look at what was drafted in the ordinance, what the law says. And I dug deep, and that's why I ended up with, well, you know, that person, whether they're paying rent or not, they're receiving value. Somebody is receiving value. Not all value is money, right? Somebody lives there rent-free, that has value. Somebody has their family in their house, instead of a tenant, there's value. So that's why when people really get stuck on the rental aspect, I wish we'd called it something different, but that's what it's called. I'll stop there and let you respond.
All right, I'm going to take it out for public comment, and then we can come back and have more discussion. So if anybody wishes to comment on this, come on up.
Your last comment, I mean, is there a way to change the name? Or if you, do you have an idea of a name change? I mean, if it's confusing or it doesn't encompass, the name doesn't encompass the actuality of the program, perhaps a better name would be appropriate. So I'm a renter, and I live in a multi-unit place currently, and the fire department came by recently, and I, they did their due diligence, and so did my landlord in terms of fire extinguishers, smoke alarms. In fact, he said that there were almost too many smoke alarms in my, my unit. So, you know, I'm so appreciative of this program because safe, sane, and affordable are the three important things. And if it's not safe, I don't want to live there. And I want to know that I'm moving into a place that will be safe, because I do have to move into a new place that's hopefully safe, sane, and affordable. So a new name, let's think about that.
Any more public comments in person? Do we have any comments on Zoom?
Go ahead, Lisa. Lisa, go ahead. Try one more time. Lisa, go ahead. I'm not sure if she was really, had her hand up for this item. It's been going up and down, so we'll get her on here sometime.
All right. Lisa, feel free to send us an email with your comments if that was indeed what your intention was. I'll bring it back to the council. Those were both really good suggestions. I, I happen to like this register without exemption, exemption, that's accountability, right? And if for some reason down the road, someone that's a family member that's living there has a friend that ends up moving in, too, I mean, that seems very reasonable.
Because I was going to ask, I, I feel it, the question in my mind is like, is the fee, what is the problem? Or is it the, the oversight that's the problem? I don't think the fee is the problem. I think it's having you guys come in and inspect it is, is probably the people's issue. So I feel like the fee exemption might not satisfy, you know, what's going on. And I, I do worry, like the example that you brought up of somebody, you know, yeah, with developmental disabilities that might be living in a house that isn't safe, that doesn't have smoke alarms. And I think, you know, that, that is a big red flag. The other thing, will you go back to the slide that had the definitions? Because I am, I, I feel like, almost like they're kind of in, you know, not lining up for me, because tenancy, I don't know, includes a lease. And I feel like that's an important part of it, that like, if you have somebody who's just staying in your house, do they have actually a lease, though? Like a binding document that says that they live there? And I feel like that is the sticking point for me. And so that maybe in a sense that where a lease does not exist, or a documentation of somebody else living there does not exist, then that could be grounds for being exempt from the program. But then, of course, there, you created a loophole. So I don't, I don't know what you think about that, but, or have you seen that?
Oh, you're absolutely correct. And, and the only reason I didn't include a definition of lease is because which one do I pick? I mean, the Merriam-Webster definition, or pick up a legal book? And I read probably a dozen different definitions for lease. And the common thread between all of them is that a lease does not specify monetary value. A lease could be, I'm loaning you my shovel, and I want it back in two weeks. That is technically, in the eyes of law, a lease. And the other thing that's very clear across these definitions is that there's nothing about a lease that says it has to be in writing. A verbal lease is a legal lease. And that could simply be, would you like to stay in my house for a couple weeks while I'm gone? That is, in the definitions that I've read, that is considered a lease. And yeah, I, I kind of, I considered carrying a couple up there, but I didn't like that I, you know, didn't have a clear code to point to, a law to point to. You know, it's a, it's a definition out of a legal handbook.
Well, while you're here, I wanted to ask you a question. So we have some houses in Arcata that are not livable, or I assume no one's living in it. So I'm just wondering, how is that handled within your division? I mean, are you working on those, or what are we, what's happening? Just curiosity.
We are aware of a couple of vacant structures. I don't remember, the last count was maybe three, three houses that were vacant. And there are a couple of commercial properties, I don't remember if it was three or four commercial properties that appear to be vacant. And the biggest thing with that is secured against entry. So if you have a vacant structure that is behind a fence and is secure against entry, it's not, not necessarily a problem. It could become dilapidated, it could become a code enforcement case for other reasons, but a vacancy alone is not necessarily an issue. It's the vacant house that is not secured against entry becomes an attractive nuisance. There are some that are on our radar, and essentially, the problem, the main reason we don't do anything right away is, number one, nobody's complaining about it. So if certainly, if you ever hear of anybody complaining about a vacancy house, especially if it's an attractive nuisance, attractive nuisance meaning the kids, the local kids in the neighborhood realize it's empty and they want to go party in there. Never did that either. So please, submit a complaint, because we respond to complaints. The other issue is, well, if we, if we open that can of worms, we're going to have to deal with all those worms. And that could mean, you know, receivership, or potentially an abatement of our own, and that costs city funds. And so that's, again, why nothing has happened yet, is because we're not getting complaints and we're not being told to go clean that up. But we are aware of a few.
All right, well, let's come back to this discussion on the rental inspection program. So does anybody have any more comments? Or would you need some guidance?
Can I ask one more question? So does code enforcement have to be complaint-driven? Or like, you are going out to a lot of these places or making contact with these people? I mean, if they say we want to be exempt, but you see an obvious violation, I mean, does that constitute, you know, having to have enforce? I'm, I'm just seeing, you know, instances where, okay, you want to be exempt from this program, but we're still going to do enforcement anyway, because there is.
Yeah, so code enforcement is definitely a broad spectrum. You know, when I show up for a building permit inspection, that's technically code enforcement. When we send a letter because somebody's letting their weeds grow over the fence and is blocking the sidewalk, that's code enforcement. And a response to a rental inspection might be, wow, you know, everything is really good except this one loose receptacle. Tell you what, why don't you call your electrician that who you said is your neighbor, who'd be willing to come fix that for you real quick, and we'll check back in tomorrow and finish this inspection? There's been quite a few of those where minor corrections are made. So technically, you could call that code enforcement. But it's not a code enforcement case necessarily until we send a notice of violation. And that's why when we talk about two have resulted in code enforcement, that's what we're talking about, is a code enforcement, a notice of violation has been sent because they were unwilling to make the corrections that were issued.
I think more broadly to answer your question, we do open code enforcement cases at times on our own, but it would have to be something fairly egregious that you would see from the public right away. So for example, I can recall a code enforcement we opened on our own on a rental property where the front door, they had removed the stoop, that was about four steps, and then the front door was at that point, you know, three, four feet high. And there was really no safe ingress and egress that we could see from the public right away. But it has to, you know, we're not walking through somebody's, you know, house or checking over somebody's backyard. I mean, that's not what we do in Arcata. So, you know, normally, code enforcement starts with a call of a complaint, either a tenant or a neighbor who sees something that they're uncomfortable with.
And I would just say, you know, there were several people contacted me, and they said, I'm, I take care of my property, it's right next door to my house, and I don't see why I have to do this. And I go in and I check it every so many months, et cetera. Now, you have those kind of landlords, and they take care of property of that nature, and they take care of their, and so some people in the beginning go, well, why? You know, I'm, I'm doing my diligence. And as we, they had to come in anyway and do it. So then they get that exemption of five years once they do their job.
Yeah, we have to be, I mean, again, there are some really great landlords, and then there's some really terrible landlords, but we have to be consistent all across the board. And so I appreciate that.
Yes, and my response when I hear that is, that's why it's so incredibly affordable, is because we're not trying to punish you. We're trying to, and if you are, if you truly are all up to speed, it's really easy. Our list is very short compared to a lot of cities. Some cities have a four-page checklist. We put, we pared our checklist down to a really, really bare minimum life safety inspection checklist, so that we can avoid issues like that.
So I guess kind of piggybacking on affordable, how much are the fines or penalties, and how often, and how long do they have to correct? My thought is if we don't make it steep enough, it might be cheaper for them to keep paying fines than to actually fix the rewiring of the house, or whatever that might be.
That, that's a great point. And we made the program for compliance, people who are complying with the program, very affordable. Notices of violations, if they're not followed up within 30-day window, result in an administrative citation, which is $100 fine per citation per day. So the, the violation is register for the program. So it's only one violation, but $100 per day adds up pretty quick.
That might get it taken care of.
Yeah, so what do you need from us?
Yeah. I would love either a directive to create a fee waiver form, if you'd like, a directive to create an affidavit for an exemption, if you like, and if there's anything specifically that you want to see at our main presentation in, in July.
Can I, can I ask a question just about like, because I, I do feel like the building official gets a lot of, you know, you, you get to make a lot of administrative decisions. And so like, I mean, is it like too much for us to be like, can we just put it on, on you to decide if they deserve an exemption or not? I mean, really, like, if they can legally prove, I guess maybe through, and then be able to sign an affidavit to show. But like, I, I think of the example, like you're talking, like, yeah, if their son's name is on a trust that they are going to get this house, like, that's pretty legally constituting that, like, you know, they, they care about the ownership of the house, and they're collectively owning this house, basically. But, you know, if it's just like, oh, yeah, my, my brother lives there, and they haven't looked at the house in 10 years, like, that's a little more of a, no, you're a tenant, you live there, it needs to be inspected. And so I feel like those are the kind of decisions that you can make, because you're the one, you know, on the ground, on the boots there. But I think, you know, the idea of creating this affidavit, to be able to say, okay, we're going to give you this exemption, but you are signing, you know, kind of creates some legal backing for us to feel more comfortable with it, too, and that they're the ones doing it, I think that is totally appropriate, and I would support that.
I agree.
As do I.
That's fine.
So you're not looking for a motion, just some directive? And I'm good with what you considered, that you would create those documents?
My suggestion is that we come up with some level of authorization and what that would look like, and then we'll bring that back to you in July.
That sounds great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great presentation. All right. New business is public hearing on proposed master fee schedule for fiscal year 2024-25? And can we have staff report from Finance Director Tabitha Miller?
Good evening. So this is pretty straightforward. This will happen every year, so we'll, we're kind of in a, a cycle here. Public hearing on the proposed master fee schedule. Just sort of an overview of the process and the procedure. Just sort of an overview of the process and the procedures. So we consolidate all the fees into one schedule. So many of the fees, if you looked through the 26 pages of fees that were there, were not being increased, but by putting them in one place, we show the public where to go to look up fees, it gives them a way to compare them. It also keeps us sort of making sure that we don't, they don't get lost in the code because it's pretty easy to have fees built into ordinances and resolutions all over the place. So it's really about consolidation. We have gone through a public notice process. This is a public hearing, so the public has an opportunity to speak about the fees in general or any specific fees that they want to talk about. It is specifically a public process and there is waiting periods for when the fees can go into effect after the public hearing. Typically, those are 30 to 60 days. That's part of the reason that we're asking, just to be consistent, that all the fees are effective July 1st, 2024. So that, that exceeds the 60 days and allows, if, and technically, it would allow anybody if they had wanted to take action against the city for something they didn't agree with. The whole goal of the fees is that they cover the cost of providing the services to the public. And the reason for that is that they're services that are specific to individuals as opposed to the community as a whole. So it's not really appropriate for it to be subsidized by taxes unless there's a public process or a public purpose involved. So it is not a tax, and so they don't go to the voters like a tax would. Generally, although there are, are a number of exceptions to this, one of the ways that we evaluate the fees and look at whether or not to increase them on an annual basis is building in an inflationary factor. We are currently using the Area West CPIU. We use the annual calculation and for the, the year between 22 and 23, it came up to a 4.3% increase. If you remember from last year, that was actually quite a bit higher, it was 8%. So again, that's consistent with what's happening in inflation. There are other methods that we use and we can use. For example, for our utilities, water, wastewater and stormwater, stormwater user rates, we do a separate, independent fee study and there's a whole separate process that, that's set out by government code as to how those get approved by the council and the public. You can also, we also, in some cases, will set things based on the market. If things like facility fees and things like that, we want to make sure that they are comparable or even a little bit better priced than maybe something that's on the private market. And we don't want to outprice ourselves in the market. And the cooperative farm shares is one good example of that. In some cases, the fees are actually set by outside regulations or ordinances and they're based on federal, state or regulatory agencies, and we follow those. And then there are areas that the council, for public purposes, can subsidize fees. And I think public transportation is probably the, the best example of that and to encourage ridership. We, we aren't, we have not increased those fees for a number of years. There are a whole list here, there are lots of fees that we're not increasing this year for a number of different reasons. So it's not that everything that's in the fee schedule is being increased, but they are there so that they're all in one place. And we do have one fee that we are proposing to decrease by half, and that would be the Mobile Home Park Rent Stabilization Administration Fee. I believe it's currently $10 per space per month, and we'd like to reduce that to $5 per space per month. You will, I believe, at your next meeting, see an ordinance change that is required to fix that too. So we're building it into the fee schedule, but it's a work in progress. This is just a really overview graphical presentation on how much our charges for service are of the total city budget. And you can see, get my little, you can see out of our 2324 budget, which is about $72.5 million, charges for fees are a fairly small amount. Certainly, intergovernmental revenues, which we know from our grants, is a number, and our taxes are still typically higher than that. And that's on a citywide basis. When you look at where those user fees and charges are coming for, from, they are certainly by far coming from our utilities, our water and our wastewater utilities make up the bulk, certainly the bulk of those. And then we've got planning fees, our transit, which includes, the only reason this is as big as, as it is, is because we've got some of those outsourced Cal Poly and other routes that we run that are a little bit more expensive than our normal fares. I couldn't fit it in the box here, so rec, rec is shortened to recreation, facility rentals, the police department and our stormwater. And with that, I'll answer any questions and leave it up to the mayor to open a public hearing if you are so inclined.
I just had a question about the cooperative farm share. Is that the same or is different than the $100 plot that you would rent that for, like at Bayside Farms?
It, it is different. The shares have to do with the, the co-op boxes where you actually can go pick up, I think they do summer and winter co-op boxes for 20 weeks. And I'm not an expert here, but I think it's 20 weeks in the summer and a shorter period in the winter. So it's participating in basically the fruits of the farm.
So I noticed that you had a subsidization for the transportation fees. Is there a possibility to ever put in some kind of waiver or subsidization for income qualified for that?
We can certainly look at that. And I can tell you that even the, the city engineer and I have talked about the possibility of looking at alternatives, you know, trying to see what we could do with the free, the free fares, because it isn't a large amount of what it costs to run our transit system. So we've, we've talked about both of those options. And I think, I think that's something that we can certainly look at. And I know we've been able to get grant funding to offer free fares in the past, across the board.
So would that be something like we could look into some kind of food equity grant or something like that?
So you're, so are you talking, okay, so I'm, I'm, okay. I'm not sure that I'm the person to ask, but we can certainly bring that up with our environmental services and look at, and look at the cost.
So just so I understand, oh, you were going to.
I'll just add, we are looking at a number of different models for operation of what I'll call kind of that CSA side of Bayside Community Park Farm right now. And so there, you will have future discussion about that. And I think we've, if we stay with that CSA model, that then we certainly could look at ways to do that.
Thanks.
All right, this is a fairly routine thing, so I'm going to open it up for public comment and then we'll just come back and.
Can I ask that you open a public hearing first?
Public hearing, open up, please. Hearing, all right.
Good evening again. Well, the, the general problem with all these increases is we're trying to have affordable housing. So, you know, every time you increase things, you know, you're, you're going against the affordable housing issue. So I, I would say that that's problematic. And I, I think our financial director also brought up in the past that we have some big deficits in the, in the state of California. We didn't really know at the time how much. But I think she had just said, she mentioned Wall Street Journal at the time, but we know now it's $39 billion that we have a deficit. And a part of that is because a lot of our major companies have left the state to go to other states that obviously have, you know, a lot less from fees that allow them to attract people for affordable housing. So I'll point that out. I would also point out that the wastewater fund, which I believe is like 8% increase, you're not very transparent with the public about this standpoint because, you know, our, our president, I think you have a big sign in front of the wastewater treatment plant for $64 million that the, the federal government and the state kicked into it. So when did you actually tell the public, when you're collecting that 8%, that it actually, a big chunk of it was paid by the state and the federal government? So, you know, that's, transparency is a very important part of being a democracy so that people understand exactly how their, their money is being spent. I noticed on the homepage too, you had an image of a gentleman because of the problems with some people that are, can't afford the wastewater treatment and the, and the water increase. And so it's definitely affecting people. And I would also point out that where did you ever like inform the public from the standpoint that used 1.5 million for the waste and 1.5 million for the water fund and paid off pensions with it? So, I mean, I'm just kind of amazed that there hasn't been more attention to how this, how this money has been allocated and spent and the details of it, not just like you approved it. I mean, I don't even think you guys really remember when you approved it for the couple different times. I mean, it's just a big number and we don't seem to have like any documentation as far as where we're at with these projects. You know, it's just, it's, it's a very disappointing situation. And I even looked up, I think, financial transparency government and there was a pretty, our, our former President Obama, you know, he had pages on this, how important it is to be transparent with our finances so the public knows so they can believe in democracy.
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to, public hearing?
My name's Joanne McGary and I have given up my car and I'm trying to use public transit and the subsidies for public transportation. You know, I know there's, it's a regional kind of issue in a lot of ways, but I really think the future needs to be getting people out of individual cars and any type of help that could be incentivized for people to take the bus, so to speak. You know, I just learned that the bus pass I have might go by the wayside and it's going to be a hardship if I have to, you know, pay more, because I'm already going to probably have to pay more for rent. And the other thing is promoting conservation of, you know, water, energy, all those kinds of things. You know, sometimes there's flat fees for things, but if people are doing the better thing by not using so much or not contributing so much to the cost of a infrastructure element or whatever, you know, what kind of rewards do we get? I, I don't exactly understand the fee schedule and stuff, but I do know that my landlord is telling me that the rent goes up because they can't get insurance, because the water bills go up, the trash goes up and all this kind of stuff. So it all comes back down to poor little old me and others who are really on limited fixed incomes and really can't afford to. And so we do what we can so that we don't have to put out so much money. So public transportation is really a, a good way to subsidize and get incentives for people to get out of the cars. So that particularly is something I'd like to be looked at.
Thank you. Any other public comments for the public hearing? Anybody on Zoom?
Nobody online.
All right, so I will close the public hearing. Excellent. Okay, what, what would you like us to do? Do you need a motion or do we have a question or?
We need a motion for you to adopt the fee schedule.
So I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 234-42, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata, updating the master fee schedule for various fees and service charges, charges for the years 2024 to 2025, fiscal years.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes. Thank you. Is everybody okay if we move on?
Mm-hmm.
All right. And new business, item B is the potential allocation of remaining City Council fiscal year community support funds. And can we have a staff report?
This is going to be a very short staff report because this is really bringing these items back to the City Council to have a conversation and hopefully give staff some direction. But really, what we wanted to talk about is just, we're in the last quarter of this fiscal year. So we're, we've got less than four months, excuse me, less than three months left. We wanted just to check in with the City Council on the funds that we set aside at the beginning of the budget year for community, excuse me, community support. We had $45,000 that was in your department budget. We have pledged 3,000 to the CERT program. And then there was also an additional $20,000 that is still unspent, ARPA funds that are available also, that have not been allocated. Just two things I will tell you is that you can certainly, we can walk through these to, tonight and you can come up with some ideas of programs or support that you would like to provide to the community. The other thing that can happen is that we can also carry them forward into next year's budget and you can allocate some, them at that point in time. Or the third option is to sort of just let them expire and then they go back into the, the fund balance and get allocated at some point in the future for another budget item. So you have all those choices in total or in part.
So before we start, I know that everybody has a lot of ideas of how to spend this very little sum of money. I would just like to remind us, as we're throwing out suggestions, that these are community funds. So if you're going to bring up anything, let's make sure that it fulfills that community funds hole. But I just want to make sure though, to clarify, on the ARPA funds, I had, you know, at the beginning, even when we were first talking about ARPA funds, had $10,000 set aside for something with the Wiat tribe, and I've got some things percolating and I want to make sure that that money still exists.
It isn't, it isn't part of that.
It is in that 20,000. So you might want to pull out 10,000 off the top of that.
If it's okay with everybody, I would like to pull that out if, if everybody's.
Well, if it was already committed, then it should be pulled out.
Let's go down the row.
Do you want to get public comment?
No, I think we can throw out some ideas first.
I'm going to differ and hear what y'all have in mind.
I, I thought we were starting at this end. Starting at an end. Oh, no, we're going down that end.
No, my, my, I have a thought in that I'm concerned about maybe the cost for Woodman's Hall, which will be the Valley West Community Center, might run higher than we were expecting. We've had delay, well, in my opinion, it's slow, let's say that. And so I'm thinking that we may have delays and may be costly and maybe we're going to have to save some money to finish that up. That's one of my thoughts. Of course, I forgot about, all about the sidewalk cleaner. And I doubt if we can even fit that into these amounts, but you know, I keep thinking about how our sidewalks and Valley West and Arcata and so forth, it would be fantastic if we had a little machine that could keep them really clean and the plaza sidewalks also. I've seen it in other communities and I've talked to the city manager about it, but I forgot to bring it up in our goals. So I just wanted to add it now.
Okay, and did you want to speak to the request that came to you specifically around the fencing at Samoa NH? Which is also written up in your packet tonight.
Oh wait, that's in here, okay. So down at the tire, Union, I think it's Union Town Tire Place, it's located on, on G and Samoa. So there is a, the, well, anyway, the corner is difficult and the fencing is not in really good shape. And so one of the conditions or discussions was with the property owner, if he went out and got three bids, that maybe we could help him with a portion of that, which would be the section that would be on the corner. So it would be just so much space, not all his fencing. He wants to fence in the house that's there because people come and knock on his, their doors and sleep on their fences. I mean, there's porches and steps. And me personally, I'd like to figure out how we could fence in that area so that we could have that gateway into Arcata, not with so many people living there. But that's something we, we talked to him about and Environmental Services has been dealing with him on that. So I'm hoping that we can follow through on that.
Do we have an estimate for the, I mean, they say they have some estimates from fence builders, but we don't know how much that is.
Yeah, they all came in, I'd say between like 28 and $36,000. And looking at sort of the linear footage, I mean, the only area that I can really make a public benefit nexus is sort of along that corner piece, which is about 20, 25% of the total. So I mean, my estimate would be probably somewhere, you know, no more than $8,000 for that project. I will just mention, in terms of kind of public benefit on that site, we are spending a tremendous amount of staff time and money specifically on that corner. So at some point, other strategies that, you know, would deter all of that type of cleanup, you know, will, will benefit the city.
So I, I love that idea because it is not a really good welcome card for Arcata, but what about, I was curious about the cost for the mural, which was also part of this improvement. Would that be funded through the Art Around Arcata program or are we looking for additional funding for that?
We do have money for that site in the Art Around Arcata second call this year.
If I can make a suggestion, so that, let's just put the amounts of the things that are suggested up and let's hear everybody's input and then we can hear public comment and then come back and.
Let me just, there's a ridge along the fence, along the, more whatever the fence is made, the fence is made out of. So this other fence, Cyclone. the fence is made out of. So this other fence cyclone, we're going across the top of it. So that means you won't have a ledge to store things on the ledge. The rest of it's open. It'll continue the way it is.
So I do, based on what's been said, I do support that. Well, I guess, going back, just, my overall thoughts on the money is that I don't want it to be reabsorbed back in the budget. It would be great if we didn't spend all of it tonight, but, you know, we'll just have to see. And that, I, I've liked, I think this came from the idea of sometimes there's a need that arises in the community, and people come to us, and we want to be able to be nimble and respond to that, but it's not in the budget. So this was kind of that, the money to be used for that. And so I understand that we're getting to the end of the year, so we have decisions to make. So I would like to spend some of it, and hopefully save some of it. Because when people from the community come to us, it's typically not with a very big ask. So it would be nice to be able to meet those needs. So that's just my overall opinion. So then specifically, I do think that we should help support the fence situation, as much as can be justified. That seems reasonable. And, and then the only other thing that I had on my list was to give some of the money to Equity Arcata to do some work on the Arcata Chinatown Project. Because we do have, I know they have some ideas and things they'd like to do, but we don't necessarily have money attached to those. And so to get started on that community project, I don't, you know, I don't know, I would defer to maybe the city manager on what, what might be an appropriate amount for that. And that's all that I have.
Can I just quickly check in? Is 5,000 reserved for community support for the rest of the year appropriate, do you think?
I would just say, I guess, maybe after we hash out the stuff, we see, we do our best to see what we can save.
And we will work to budget this again in fiscal year 2425.
I support what Alex previously said that isn't up there, about support for Woodman's Hall. If we need extra stuff to just get some of the programs off the ground, or whatever, you know, we might need towards that, I think that's key. And that maybe can go down to the ARPA Fund column, too, because that was originally supported through ARPA Funds as well. And if we want to put additional funding there, I think that's a great idea. I had Equity Arcata and Chinatown Project on my list, and I think we talked about that a bit at goal setting as well. And then, just generally, and I don't know what our current level of support for this already is, but just public art in general, and, and how much support is going to that. And then, coupled with that, some talk, and I know I, I talked to the city manager about this, but just some welcome signage, and, you know, some.
Thank you, yes.
Hey, this is, this is the place, kind of signage. And I know that some of us have looked at possible spots for that, or, or thoughts even, too, as we're, and maybe this could get enveloped into some other grants, but especially on Samoa, or on that bridge, Samoa Bridge, not the Samoa Bridge, but our Samoa Bridge, just of, of muraling, or whatever. But that would have to be done in conjunction, working with Caltrans. But those are some thoughts.
Yeah, you took mine, definitely. Signage, I'm in big favor of that. So, I am, so we've got everybody's thoughts and ideas here. I'm going to open it up to public comment.
Could I add one more?
Yes. Oh, no, we never caught you. Yes, we're coming back.
I'm just curious, on the 45, it's 62, but we have the 20 on the bottom. So, we're, we're still looking at 62 to fund all of these, correct?
Yes, I just put it into two separate plots. And, and if you committed to the tribal project, which it sounds like you already have.
Then it brings it down to 52.
Then you're, yeah, actually, you're 40, 42, if you also include the Woodman's Hall there. You've kind of, you've taken away that ARPA. But you can move that around.
Gotcha, okay. So, one of the things that I'd like to put up there is a possible community garden out in Valley West, now that there's a community center. It does about the park there. It is a food desert. Folks out there have really wanted to get out to the Bayside Farms and pay $100 for the plot, but they simply don't have the time when you get off work. It's, it, there's no bus that goes out there first, of all. So it would be great, you know, I mean, I'm not thinking that they can fund the entire garden, but even a small amount can get that going. And we have a couple organizations that are interested in piggybacking on that.
Would you be comfortable if I plug in 5,000? Again, you guys are going to make that decision.
That sounds wonderful.
Perfect.
So, I, I just wanted to follow up on the welcome sign. So, one, one idea a while back was to look at the PG&E box that's on G Street, and to make that somewhat of a welcome sign into Arcata. Is that what you're thinking of when you talk about welcome sign?
No, I'm on a big, like, hot freeway sign, says.
You want it on the freeway?
Yeah, like when you're going into Fortuna, and it's like, Fortuna, the friendly city, you know, or when you go into Kinleyville, they have their big sign.
But isn't that a lot more expensive than our little pot of mad money?
Problem.
It'll get us started, maybe the design phase.
All right, let's, let's keep public comment.
Could, could we really quickly just, to clarify that it's not the community garden in Ware, so that people aren't confused?
Of course.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. My name's Joanne McGary, and I did send an email, I think, to just Alex, but maybe to council member Stillman, Atkins Alzar as well, a suggestion that in a climate-changing world, City Hall set the example of going from lawn to a native plant garden. And I sent some examples, and some information about people who would be willing to help work on something like that, so that, especially on the slope, you know, the upper part could potentially, for the time being, stay. But I just think there's inexpensive ways to create a native plant garden in the front of our city hall, that would set an example for others in a climate-changing world, to get us away from the lawn mowers that I keep talking about. And so, I know people with the Native Plant Society, and other prominent people who are really interested in this kind of project, to set, set an example to the community of getting away from the lawns in front of buildings. So, an interesting kind of facade maintenance of, in the garden, in the plant, on the land. So, that was an idea. And I don't know what the cost would be, but I have a lot of people who are really, really interested in wanting to look into that, and see if it's even feasible.
Thank you.
Okay, looking at your list, the sidewalk cleaner has kind of stimulated something from Earth Day last year, which was the street cleaner, which, for five years, you haven't even had one. So, I don't know whether, you know, I was told at one time that you actually had the money for that, but I haven't seen a street cleaner since that conversation. So, I mean, this is pretty important. This is part of your Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, which you file annual reports stating to the state of California that you are cleaning the streets. And if you don't think that that's a lot of stuff that's going down the drain, that could be prevented with a street sweeper, I mean, just look at your ambassador program. That one, you could say, yes, the state of California, for the downtown area to Northtown, we're doing a good job. We collected eight tons with our five-gallon bucket. So, just imagine further out from those areas, how much of this stuff has been going down our drains, and out into the bay. And I don't think you got that street cleaner. But, I mean, I have not, I have not seen it go by. I'm, I'm aged 16, but maybe, maybe you do, and I've just missed it. But they're, they're pretty loud, and you can, you can hear them. So, maybe I'm very practical with where I would like to see the money go, because, you know, I don't want to see tons and tons of plastic, and all kinds of stuff out in our bays. And this is something that, you know, we're telling the public that we're a very good environmentalist city, and we're taking care of these things. And I'm not so sure we are. I mean, I, I'm happy with the ambassador program for, I mean, I see them picking up cigarette butts. I mean, should be the bars that are doing it, instead of the ambassadors, in my opinion. But we need to like, you know, focus on some of these fundamentals that are not being addressed, and that you are filing annual reports on. And I don't think that's a very healthy direction, to be saying that you're doing all this stuff, and you're cleaning, when you're, when you're not. So, I would highly recommend, if you have not, don't have the money for the street sweeper, that, this is what I brought up on Earth Day last year, that, I mean, you haven't cleaned the streets in five years, because you haven't had the equipment. So, thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any other in-person public comments? Okay, anybody on Zoom?
Nobody on, well, let me just double-check here. Nope, no online public comments.
All right. So let's bring it back to the council.
Well, I think.
I don't know, as much as I love the idea.
Do you want me to take the sidewalk cleaner off for now?
Yeah, I was gonna say, as much as I love.
We're gonna have to take it off, no?
I would love to look for another way. And I feel like if we get a sidewalk cleaner, doesn't have to be like, an electric sidewalk cleaner, do those things even exist?
Like a broom?
Broom.
Well, you need, there, there are a lot of conditions. You're not supposed to spray your sidewalks unless you have something special over the drain. So having a sidewalk, it would pull it all in. But nevertheless, you know, to really clean them, even with a broom, you're not supposed to put things down.
So let's continue to explore other.
Yeah, it's a great opportunity.
Budget streams for a sweet sweeper, and.
It's just a wish list.
I know.
For me, for me, that's all.
I think it's for everybody, is a wish list.
So, we can take it off.
We did. So it looks like we've got a $3,500 deficit. I feel like, as much as I love the idea of welcome signage, I think that it would be much more than $5,000 if we were even going to consider that. I think that, you know, maybe some public art support can be in the form of some directional, or calling out things, art. So I am okay with removing welcome signage.
And I would support, and I, I don't know, maybe this is, because you guys picked that number, but like, taking at least some of that public art support money, and then just kind of putting it back into this, this reserve idea of us to have some funds for when these projects come up, or when things come up. But also, you know, for when opportunities for art like that come up, could be coming from those funds as well.
I think that's a great idea. So put another, $10,000 back into reserve for community support, $5,000 for art, and an extra, another 10 go to.
Well.
Wait a minute.
I'm not going to be able to support.
1,500 here?
It's really hard to think about it, you know, it's about billboards or signs. And we did have a sign, Welcome to Arcata, it was on a mound. The property now belongs to the city, but it was on a mound, and the cows would come up and rub against it. And eventually, it went away because of that.
Yeah, it was the old 4H sign.
Yeah, I mean, I've always wanted a sign on like, 299 on that exit, like, heading into Valley West. I think that would be my ideal, like, location of a welcome sign that could be, like, beautiful art. I don't know how much that would cost, but that, I envision that. But again, we can talk about signage another day.
Well, there are a lot, there are a lot of, I would say, business owners that absolutely support the idea of advertising, hey, you're, you know, it's Arcata, enter here. So I do think that is something for a conversation, as well as the sidewalk cleaner, as well. And, you know, last night, Councilmember Stillman, you were mentioning bringing back that fundraiser. And when I got home, it made me think of, what if, we do have a lot of beautification projects, and sometimes it's hard to, as much as we want them, like, other things just become more important. What if that was, you know, considered to be part, you know, part of that fundraiser, where we came up with some beautification, like the signs, or the, you know, the sidewalk cleaner, things that we could rally the town to help support?
That's always a possible for Baton Rouge.
Could we get a tally on where we're at?
So, where we're at, as you can see down at the bottom, that there's basically a zero, which means that all of the money has been allocated. So you're balanced, is what, what we're saying.
Thank you.
With 10,000 still reserved.
So, Kimberly, for $5,000 for a community garden, do you have an idea of, like, people that, I mean, I don't want to put, never mind. I think the community garden is lovely.
What was the question?
There is no question. We're good.
Work on numbers with community partners later.
Details, details. But I like that idea. I like, you know, Woodman's Hall support.
We, we have some community partners ready to go.
Believe it. I think that's awesome. We're balanced.
Well, we may not need Woodman's Hall, but I have no idea.
But then if we don't use it, then we'll roll it back into the reserve for community support. I'm totally fine with that.
But I'm just concerned about how long, you know, I come from the private sector on doing things, and the public sector takes a lot longer. But I still would like, you know, I did notice all the fencing's gone.
It's going to come back. They're just doing some ADA compliance.
So, this seemed to be a lot easier and more amicable than I thought it was going to be. Are we good? Does somebody want to make a motion about it?
I move that we allocate the funds in the way that are on the board here.
I will send you a copy of this when we're done.
Based on Tabitha's calculations, that will be provided.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Good work, everybody. That was great. All right. It is time for our second oral and written communications. The city appreciates public input. This time is provided for people to address the council, or submit written communications on matters that are not on the agenda. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss, or take actions on items that are not listed on the posted agenda. At the end of all oral and written communications, the council may respond to statements. Supported requests that require council action will be set by the council for future addenda, or referred to staff. Speakers addressing the council are limited to three minutes. If you are in person and wanting to give public comment, please line up at the podium. Raise your hand if you're on Zoom. Press star nine if you're on the phone. Let's go.
And three things. First of all, apparently, the Eureka City Council met last night, and Councilmember Leslie Castellano proposed that they consider a ceasefire agenda for their next meeting. And I do want to say that this is beyond performative, what we did on March 6th, as the city of Arcata, that we now have nearby municipalities considering this. And so I do appreciate your leadership in the community for that. Just to follow up a little bit on the earth flag that's over there by the California flag, and then there's the US flag, you know, all those three flags are behind the dais. And I don't know if there's any reason that the earth flag needs to be behind the dais. And like I said, and I've asked for this actually years ago, that we consider putting the earth flag right here next to the podium, you know, as a, something visible, to remind us of the future, of our earth, and our need to do what we can to protect it. And so, the final thing, I guess, I'm following up on is the email I sent you. And again, you know, I had hoped you would have a citizens task force on homelessness. But maybe what is better is a citizens oversight committee on homelessness, to find out how we are spending money, and what the programs being developed are. Because I have had personally some incidences, and I've had some encounters just even this afternoon, coming here to this meeting, that really concerned me. And we're talking about putting a fence up to deal with some situations, and we're putting scissor gates in front of some of the storefronts. So, we need to have some oversight, I think, about what's happening with those programs. And also a report on where those ARPA monies that were spent previously, you know, what they went to. Just transparency, accountability, and effectiveness. You know, that's all we deserve. And that's what I would really like this council to consider. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to continue with the safety element. Last meeting that we had, I basically asked you guys during the consult, consent calendar, to pull the annual report for that. And that was for your benefit, because it wasn't for my benefit. The benefit for you was to pull it, and then have your staff come back with an accurate report on that. Because unfortunately, what you were putting unfortunately, what you were putting in that annual report was not true. You addressed the noise element. You haven't done anything for the noise element in two years. And I've been pretty systematic about, you know, documenting this, sending letters to you. It's all on the camera. So complete failure in that area. The other area that I've been addressing too, from the standpoint was, you know, my own observation intuition with what's happening on the streets. I mean, lots and lots of cars have been just run into, crossed, and, you know, just totaled. And I brought this up. I tried to continue this with Karen from the standpoint of getting data on it so that we have an understanding of where these are happening in the city, whether, you know, do the police actually give any tickets for any of this, these incidents, whether it's noise or, you know, and we failed in that area. I mean, we finally got a report, I think, last, last week, and it was kind of embarrassing from the standpoint, it said first quarter. I'm not so sure whether first quarter meant it was the first time we've ever done this in the history of our, of our city. Normally, you know, you can go back to junior high on this, that you would have statistics from quarters before that, the years before that. So you can like do some comparisons. Are we improving in areas or getting worse? And I'll have to point out one thing that's happened in the last week that I wasn't aware of, that was published in the newspaper, that it's not a very good thing to be published for Humboldt County as far as DUIs. The fatalities are the worst in the nation, not in the state of California, in the nation. So what I'm seeing on the streets that weren't people actually getting killed are, could easily have been somebody seriously injured or killed. I think it's just like an undercount, to tell you the truth. What I saw in front of my house with the guy running into a truck, pushing it up on the sidewalk on 16th Street, not too far from the high school, and flipping upside down, and then crawling out, two of them with airbags, and telling me how high they were. And then to see our police department, that wasn't recorded as a DUI. That, they got off because they just said they were texting. So what I'm also saying is that the air quality from the standpoint, there is no, there is no testing here. I see all these diesel trucks that are coming through this community, and there, I see the black smoke coming out of it. You know, the rest of California has standards. They're being tested. So unfortunately, you're failing in these areas.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. I'm Fred Wise with ArcataOne.com. I'm going to talk about the gateway form-based code, the gateway code. I'm going to talk about process. So there's no recusal issue. I have requested of the community development director that he inform the public when the planning commission will be talking about the gateway code. He has not done that, but I believe it's going to be talked about on Tuesday. The gateway code was last updated in September. I've done a real thorough analysis. I'll be sending you a copy. I've got about 50 pages of errors and corrections that need to be taken place. As an example, the call for secure bike parking being within 750 feet of the entrance of a building, that's two and a half city blocks, we assume that's a typo. They call for bike parking for a restaurant that could seat 120 people, five bike parking spaces, that is not a typo. It's, a lot of the gateway code seems like it's for a different city than Arcata. And I want to see that changed, okay? The big thing is, you made the determination that the L Street corridor would be a linear park eight months ago. In the gateway code, there is no map of the linear park. There's no accommodation for it. There's no mention of it. That has to change. And I'm telling you, or I'm asking, requesting of you, if the planning commission is not willing to do that, then you're going to have to insist on it, in my view. The, there are dozens of errors that actually would affect the way the code is implemented in Arcata. And there's about maybe 20 or 30 things that I think should be changed to be for Arcata. In my view, the planning commission has spent very little time on this. It seems like they're planning one session. It's never really clear. May 14th is going to be a public hearing for the general plan, the gateway plan, gateway area plan, and the gateway code. I don't know whether that's expected to be one session or not. I'd like to see all this improved. Two years ago, I said that, when we thought this is going to take about six months, I said that we may get into a situation where everything is, we go through the whole process, it comes to you, and you will not be able to adopt it because of lots of little things. I want to see the little things changed. On a general sense, we've got some good product here, but there's dozens of little things. In the gateway code, there's dozens of big things too. So you'll be hearing, I'm almost done. I'll send it to you real soon. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, Chris Richards. And just a couple of small comments. I was watching that you were moving through your process to change your guidelines for council members and for committee members and all of that. And the thing that, maybe I'm confused, but it looks like you're really working to limit community engagement at the podium for meetings. And I'm thinking that you're moving the opposite direction. I mean, short of your major events where, like the Gaza event or some of these other things, I think typically you don't have a lot of speakers. And I think by limiting them in the way that you're planning to, I think that's probably not a good thing. I would recommend making the guidelines more fluid where you, and maybe you're gonna do that, where you have power at meetings to sort of, you know, evaluate. But it looks like you're going to take people that speak at the first part of the meeting for open conversation. And if they speak at that part, they won't be allowed to talk at the, at the latter part. And let, and does that mean for each thing that, like, talk about one thing at the start, talk about another thing at the end? I mean, I'm just, I'm trying to look through, and I know you're in the process of doing this, but I would encourage you to do what you can to keep open for as much community engagement as you can. And I realize you're limited on time when you have a lot of folks speaking. But from what I've seen the last couple of years, typically that's not the case. So I don't know. I look at any way that you can encourage public engagement, you know, especially at these meetings. Anyway, I would put in a plug follow-up with what Fred was saying. You know, back in August, the three non-recused people that were on, at that meeting, and it was a big event, they, you guys made the announcement that you were going to not put in that extra street and look at other options with the KL. And like Fred's saying, you guys really need to work with staff, work with the planning commission, and iron out some of these issues. Because even the great Redwood Trail folks are confused. I mean, they're working on this huge project. And it's not real clear that you guys are still even pushing for this vision that you guys seem so excited about at that August meeting. But let's try to work more on that, and I'll continue to engage more about that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Do we have anybody on Zoom?
Uh, we do. First up is Lisa. Go ahead, Lisa. We're gonna get it this time.
Ah, okay. Thank you. I so want to thank Judith, and I hope I can do that now. I want to express to her how much I have appreciated her years of service and dedication to Arcata by lending her unequaled expertise to the planning commission for all of these years. Over the winter, I stumbled on the resume Judith submitted when applying for the commission many years ago. I had tucked it away in my files as I was so impressed by it and thankful to have her as a commissioner. How fantastic it was to have such a qualified and educated candidate with her planning and environmental credentials far surpassing any commissioner then or now. At the time Judith joined the commission along with Alderaan Lair, John Graves, and An King Smith, and others, she not only learned from the best, but she brought her own respectful manner and expertise to the table alongside them. She was always listened to, as her perspective is learned, honest, and always had the best interest of Arcata. Environmental stewardship while enabling responsible growth was the focus of the commission, and they crafted the Excellent General Plan 2020 and the Land Use Code reflective of these goals. I do hope with all of my heart that we are not straying from this goal with this decision to say goodbye to one of the best commissioners that Arcata has been graced to have. Thank you, Judith, for your service.
Thank you, Lisa.
Okay, our next speaker is call-in user. Go ahead.
Good evening, council. John Emick from Valley West. I have a number of issues with city property in Valley West. The chain fence, chain link fence is down, and now there's a campfire circle near the future Valley West Community Center building. At the city's pump station on the Courtyard Apartments property, there's somewhat obscene graffiti on one side and someone sleeping on the other. I cleaned out the sleeping spot and called the police about the graffiti. I'm also in touch with the property manager here at Courtyard. I'm grateful to see more police presence up here lately. Unfortunately, given these incidents and others, it's not enough. I'm asking for even more police presence in Valley West, including a regular patrol through Courtyard. Please prioritize that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, our next speaker is Jim. Go ahead, Jim.
Hello to staff and to council. I mainly want to just echo the thoughts of Fred and of Chris in request of council to move forward with visioning on the L Street Rous- Trails corridor from Samoa Boulevard to Alliance Road and look to both, you know, developing it for further as time goes on. I mean, the main thing is just to preserve it. It gives a certain sense of confidence to the community that what was stated in August is something that is actually, you know, moving forward and kind of, and concretizing to something. And just beyond that, and eventually preserving that, that greenway and that corridor, and start to look at some ideas. We've talked to people in the community, and we've talked to folks about different visioning. I know Stacy has mentioned, this is not from her or talking to her, but she's mentioning about with the Chinatown. And from what I understood, and I could be wrong, it sounds like some of that would relate to the corridor and possibly either with some historical signage, or possibly even acknowledgement of some areas. Beyond that, some other ideas. And anyway, at this point, I don't know what point, if it's through emails, or possibly just individually contacting some of the council members. I'd love to have further conversation about what's next. Even if the money's not there, it's a diamond in the rough, but we just would like to see from the community just the idea that this is moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
There is no more online public comment.
No, it's not.
Thanks. Staff reports, do we have any?
Uh, yeah, just a couple of things quickly, since we've been talking quite a bit about Woodsmen Hall. We did sign the contract with Hooven Construction to complete the ADA ramp, so that should be started. I signed the notice to proceed just this week, so they should be out there, maybe even this week or next. And has been reported, we've started to move some fencing around to make those ADA connections in that parking lot. We are starting to work on the interior improvements. Part of that is testing for asbestos and lead. That testing has been done, and we're awaiting those results to keep things moving forward there. Just to share, maybe answer a couple of questions that were raised earlier. The city does still operate our old street sweeper. It has been out. It was recently, I saw it last week, so I know that. We have ordered, you did pay for, and we have ordered a new street sweeper. I'm not gonna quote me, but I will send you how many months ago it was. But I think we could be at around 10 months at this point, that that has been on order. So some of these larger pieces of equipment just have tremendous lead times coming out of the pandemic. But it has been ordered. When we last, in case you have missed it, there will be an update on the wastewater treatment plant project. We have that scheduled for May to come to the council. And I will assure you that when we did wastewater studies, we did have actually some pretty earnest public engagement. We actually had a couple of fairly large meetings here within the last, I'll say, 10 years. And I can just say, at all of those meetings, we walked through the project potential costs for some of these large projects, and we every single time promised the community that we would do everything we could to bring in additional grants to try to offset some of those costs. So I think that is all my updates.
Thank you. All right, council updates. Let's start with Kimberly.
Yeah, last Tuesday, April 9th, I attended the Humbolter's Guide to Housing, which was a housing law seminar put on by our Housing and Community Development. And it was informative. So I'm really glad that I made it. Want to remind people that this Saturday, this weekend on April 20th at 10:00 AM, there's gonna be a marsh cleanup, and it'll be hosted by Humboldt Pet Supply. They're getting going, they'll be doing this monthly. So let's keep that gem of ours tidy, meet over there. And they also have some really cool prizes. So they make it a lot of fun. And they feed you, coffee and donuts too. So 10 o'clock, be there, Saturday.
Okay. So I just wanted to say I really look forward to the outcome of the joint Everest of Cal, Cal Poly Humboldt and the City of Arcata and the Arcata Fire Department addressing buildings of various heights and dimensions. Presently, all our larger building plans, they all go through a very stringent and rigorous, rigorous out-of-the-area plan check. I know that AP, well, Arcata Fire District is particularly concerned about a residential and mixed-use buildings that are taller than 40 feet. And I believe all this will become clearer as we get the consultant's opinions, and I'm looking forward to those, and I'm hoping it's going to come in fairly soon. On another note, I know that Arcata Police Department's been in Valley West quite a bit, and they pretty much cleaned up McKinney's property. But I know that will be, continue to be an issue for us, and it's something I want to see us figure out how to address. And since he doesn't have an interest in actually selling the property. I wanted to mention that Gobber Days is coming up, and it's going to be this weekend. So it's Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. It's part of Earth Day this year. And we have a lot of children's activities on Sunday. It was very, a lot of fun for children last year from 10:30 to 1:30. There are all kinds of activities that are put on by various community groups headed up by Friends of the Arcata Marsh. We're going to have a new event, which is Big Sit. So anyone that's not registered for Gobber Days but just wants to spend time in one place and see how many birds they can see, or how many birds have been seen, that'll be out at the Arcata Marsh Interpretive Center, and it'll be from 8:30 to 5:00. And so I think it'll be an interesting opportunity, because often you read about, just sit in one place and see what you see. So this is an opportunity to see something like that. And thank you.
All right. I would just like to talk about the thing that I am most excited about, and that is the fact that the plaza is going to be closed to traffic for the farmer's market starting this Saturday, Earth Day. I know that it was something that the Plaza Task Force had called out as something that was of great importance. And I know people can sometimes get frustrated at sometimes glacial pace, things take in the government for make things happen. But this was a wonderful collaboration between a lot of entities. And I know that Saturday it probably won't be perfect. There'll be a lot of opportunities for course correction. But I'm really looking forward to just a beautiful car-free day on the plaza and for years to come. So thank you to North Coast Growers Association and the city for really working hard to make that happen. I think it's something that I'm really looking forward to. I just want to give a shout out to John Shelter and all the work that he has done in the marsh. I've seen his posts about what he is pulling out of the marsh, and I just really want to express my gratitude. I've been on a lot of pack-out cleanups in the marsh and have seen some of the detritus that is there. And so I know that it's not an easy job, and I really appreciate that. And this is absolutely nothing to do with the council report, but we just heard Jim talk. So if anybody is really missing La Tratoria, then I know a lot of people are. They're having a pop-up at Alkemy Distillery next Saturday, so shout out to them. Cheers. All right. All right.
Thank you. So if any, I just want to encourage people, if you did not see last night's discussion, there was a really comprehensive presentation and discussion about capital improvement projects in Arcata, what has been accomplished and what is on the list this year to be accomplished. And it is extremely impressive. And so if you're wondering, you know, about what's happening, I would encourage you to watch at least that portion of the meeting. I recently attended, also with Councilmember Schaefer, the Alliance for Housing and Climate Solutions Group. It's a combination, there's people from Green Belt and Cal Yimby that have some different ideas for bills that have to do with housing and climate solutions. And they are looking for feedback and to run those by various community members. And so we got to be part of that little informal kind of feedback group. And I did hear from Supervisor Wilson, who was there with us as well, that they were really grateful that they started in Humboldt with our group because they felt that, like they got some really important feedback. And so I thought that was good to hear. And I think several of us attended the CRTP little transpo party gathering last week, just kind of an informal get-together to, for people to hang out and talk about responsible transportation priorities. And that was fun. I appreciate the invitation to that. And I have HCOG tomorrow, so I'll be able to report out about that at our next meeting.
Yeah, I got to hang out with Stacy a lot in the last couple of weeks. We got to, yeah, go to that Alliance meeting, and then also the transpo party, both great opportunities to connect with people about housing, transportation, everything in the community, so that was great. I also got to attend the Young Professionals Mixers that the Chamber has been putting on quarterly, and Gloria did a fantastic job, a lot of energy behind that, and it was a great group of people to get together with. And then my official meeting that I went to, I did get to attend a Sister City Committee meeting. They're well underway for planning the Eye Block Party, which is Labor Day weekend every year. And then they will also be having kind of a Get People Excited interim fundraiser for that, which I, they're still oscillating on the date a little bit, but it looks like it's going to be at the end of June at the Arcata Playhouse, and they will be showing the film The Big Yellow Bus, which is the movie that they made about the first trip to Kamwhapa. It's a short film, it's only about 30 to 40 minutes. But they're excited to share that with the community and get some folks involved who went on that first trip down to Kamwhapa, and also, you know, bring in some, some information and presenters about La Provenir, which is one of the nonprofits down there that they've been supporting. And so that will be really exciting. And when I have that official date, I'll make sure to announce it and get it to everybody. And then, yeah, our CEA is next week, so I'll report out. And then, I don't think we've announced that, Meredith and I get to go on a really cool trip to, with the county, which is going to be about offshore wind, to get to go visit some of the offshore wind facilities that are out in Massachusetts, and tour those and meet with, you know, similar community leaders that are kind of in our position but flipped to the other side. And so when I get back from that on Saturday, I'm going to be heading straight to Alchemy to get my carbonara fix from La Tratoria, so.
Yeah, it's going to be great. The communities, tribal leaders, chamber leaders, just all sorts of people that are experiencing, I mean, we get to get on a boat to go look at the turbine. I mean, it's a really great opportunity, I'm very grateful for it. Dates of future meetings. So Councilmember White, last night, we had quite a short discussion on our June, our end of May and June meetings. So if you want to grab your calendar, so we can just make sure that the dates that we kind of settled on are okay with you.
Yeah, so we will have normal meetings in May, on the 1st and the 15th. We are going to have a special meeting on May 29th, which we, right now, believe will be gateway and general plan related, because we have one of you missing each for the June meetings. We will need to be, okay, so let's just go straight through. So our next meeting will be that May 29th, general plan and gateway. June 5th will be a regular meeting, minus Mayor Matthews. And then we will be meeting on June 12th, minus.
No.
No one. Everyone's here on the 12th. Okay. Budget, yes, to pass our budget, hopefully. And then we will be canceling June 19th, because it's Juneteenth. So that is a holiday for us, and we will cancel that meeting.
So let it be written, so let it be done. All right. Not quite eight, but I will adjourn.